Thanks, we're all set.
All set. All right, we're back and next up is a discussion by the board and a vote to appoint committee member reappointments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And the town posting of it, the application deadline doesn't expire until May 10th, 2013. So just in the event that we might have applications for some of these incumbent positions, I think we have to delay this vote until after that.
That's fine. So we'll hold this over till next week.
Okay.
Put back on. And well, I guess this would be a good time to ask the board, at least on these positions, there's incumbents for specific positions and there have been no other applications? Would the board want to consider next week voting all the ones that do not have competition?
Yes.
Okay.
Without interviews because they're non-regulatory boards?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Do we want to do that though? Because it seems to me we're way ahead of the game here. These are terms that don't expire until the end of June. It's not, none of these require an interview. If these are folks who are in good standing, they're not on any of the regulatory bodies where we require an interview. It seems to me that we've got, at this point, there's almost two months before their terms expire. These interviews, I think, or these appointments could certainly wait at least a month, I think, without putting any undue stress on the board and give the public the opportunity to submit applications if anyone is interested. But I think casting a vote now, two months ahead of the expiration of these committees?
No, I think the whole idea, and please take this the right way. Every time we wait until the month of June, we're up against a wall. And specifically, it's a good suggestion that we wait until after, you know, what it was posted, May the 10th. But I don't know how we would open it back up again. In other words, we've already posted that the deadline is May the 10th. What we'd be saying then is, okay, we're going to re-advertise this and open the deadline till June the 10th, or whatever it might be. I think this is a good time to let folks know that they have until the 10th to apply for these appointments, these committees.
I think the other thing we have to keep in mind, which is why we spaced it too, is because of the workload in the office of handling all of this, you know, having applications come in. I mean, if you know that no one else is applying after May 10th, then you can move and appoint this group and then the office can get all of them out.
So we'll bring it up next week and then we can discuss it. The deadline is May the 10th. I didn't realize that and thank you for picking up on it.
And I would think that after we did this vote, we would then post a new list saying, what are the now current vacancies and have another deadline for that group.
Right.
That some of these would no longer be on that list.
I did ask, I did ask the office to get this interview process behind us so we're not waiting until June the 30th, which we have over many years. We've had meetings, just the whole night was interviews.
Well, if you remember too, we tried, we did that last year too. We wanted to make sure that all the appointments were done by early June so that boards didn't find themselves in a position of not having a quorum, or members hadn't been appointed until like first comes around and some of them. So we said we were going to have it all done way before the middle of June so that it was done. Because it does have a considerable workload to this in the office to.
Next up is a board discussion of the ballot questions. I'll make sure that we put this on earlier in the evening so we don't lose some of the viewers in the future. But town council's advised that as long as we don't use any of the equipment, meaning...
Public resources.
Public resources, copy machines, the email printers, things of that nature.
Employees.
Employees. So that when in fact we do the press releases, one of us will have to print them on our own computer and put those to the press. Yes.
To that end, I had been asked to compose a letter concerning the ballot question two, which I printed at home and made copies for everybody here. I have also emailed this to people on the board to receive their responses. And I have put into what I have here, incorporate most of the suggestions that were made. I would, with the permission of the board, like to read the letter out loud and then if there's further discussion about other changes you'd like me to make before we make this as a press release, that's the way I'd like to proceed, but only with the authorization of the board to do so.
All right, that sounds great. And I have a letter as well for the other ballot question one that I will print at home and make sure that I bring next week for everybody. Yeah. Okay. Let's run through it.
No, I was just thinking of time. There's still time.
There's still time.
I don't know why I thought this was the last.
Doug, do you want to go ahead and read it to the record?
On May 21st, the voters of Falmouth will be asked to approve a proposition, two-and-a-half day exclusion to fund the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to dismantle and sell the wind turbines currently operating at the wastewater treatment facility. Although Wind One and Wind Two were approved by numerous votes of the town meeting of the Board of Selectmen, they have been the source of controversy since they were erected. Last spring, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen made a commitment to the town to work as expeditiously as possible to resolve the concerns that were being raised. Consequently, the Board of Selectmen, with the financial support of the Mass Clean Energy Senator, Center, hired the Consensus Building Institute to help the town develop a strategy for solving the issues related to the wind turbines. CBI formed the Wind Turbine Option Analysis Process, WTOP, group, who is charged with the task of arriving at a compromise solution to the issues raised regarding the turbines. Before the meetings began, the facilitator from CBI realized that the possibility of reaching such a universally accepted solution was impossible. Therefore, the charge to the group was to investigate the full range of options available and to present the best possible choices to the Board of Selectmen. The WTOP was comprised of the primary stakeholders involved in the issue, i.e. residents living near the turbines, taxpayers concerned with the financial implications, representatives from town departments, people knowledgeable about renewable energy, and individuals working for amenable resolution. In addition to the members of the group, one or two selectmen attended every single one of the 24 meetings held during this eight-month period. Following the direction of the Board of Selectmen, all possible solutions were to be considered for initial discussion and further analysis if possible. The WTOP dismissed some options quickly due to obvious physical or economic restraint, while other solutions were considered by bringing in experts in the field and by collecting relevant data. A final report from the WTOP was made to the Board of Selectmen on January 18th, 2013, in the Herman Room of the Falmouth Public Library. In this report, three packaged options were presented for consideration. One, full operation of the turbines with home purchasing or noise easements. Two, various ranges of curtailment options. And three, removal and sale of the turbines. On Wednesday, January 23rd, the Board of Selectmen heard public comment and during these two weeks also received numerous written correspondences on these issues. On Thursday, January 31st, the Board of Selectmen voted to adopt the option of dismantling and selling the turbines. The board unanimously made this decision after careful consideration of the report of the WTOP, as well as the numerous correspondences and comments from all the town residents. The board felt that this option had both the greatest clarity and possibility for a speedy resolution and healing for the town. Because of the state's involvement and support in locating these turbines, the board contacted representatives from the Commonwealth in hopes of receiving some financial support or forgiveness of debt associated with the turbines. While both Mass CEC and the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs have stated that they will not be able to provide any funding for this option, the board remains committed to pursuing this plan. On the other hand, Governor Patrick has stated on public radio that he is sympathetic to the needs of the town of Falmouth, and he has been contacted urging his support for the removal of the turbines. While this option does have significant financial costs, the dollar amount can be accurately determined, understood, and presented clearly to the voters. With no support from the state, a home with an assessed value of $471,000 would have an anticipated total cost of $800, or roughly $45 per year. Most importantly, this plan will provide for relief to the affected homeowners and allow the town as a whole to move forward towards resolution. The board carefully considered the other options suggested by the WTOP and felt that the removal and sale of the turbines was the best choice. In order to operate the turbines at full capacity to maximize the production of electricity and financial gain, some houses ranging from one to an unknown number would possibly have to be purchased or taken by eminent domain to ensure adherence to DEP guidelines. The financial costs of this process could be extremely high since there would be legal fees associated with the takings, real estate costs of buying and selling property, likely litigation charges and settlements, in addition to the concerns of neighbors who felt that their property values had been diminished. Moreover, the cost of the affected residents would be inestimable. The curtailment options seem to satisfy nobody. The residents would likely still suffer from the effects of the turbines and the town would likely feel significant financial loss. Those concerned about climate change would likely be frustrated that the turbines weren't producing more energy and the residents would likely live under the constant fear that the curtailment policy could be changed the next day or year. For the remainder of the useful life of the turbines, the town would be reminded of the battle that was lost by all parties involved. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen has unanimously endorsed this plan. The town meeting approved the motion to ask the voters to consider funding this option through a propped two-and-a-half-day exclusion, as well as requesting special legislation to allow this borrowing. The Board of Selectmen hopes that the voters of Falmouth will support their recommendation and vote in favor of ballot question number two on May 21st.
I think it's well set. I think you did a great job.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman and the selectmen, just the board had asked if I would have town council take a review for consistency and any questions on this from a statutory basis. And he did later in the day today provide one comment to me on the, and I'm just passing this along now for members of the board. Fairly minor, but the town council fellow was significant to mention. The third paragraph from the end, the last line, the word evicted, town council suggests consideration of the word relocated. Because evicted is not in the eminent domain statute, relocation is. So he's just suggesting from a legal standpoint, that's the more accurate term, if that would be within your consideration. So I pass that along.
I'll make that change. I think that's to cover, make sure we're saying the right legal word, it's appropriate.
Does the, does the board have any other changes that did suggest, Doug, to make on this?
I don't have any changes. I do like the way it's laid out, especially, you know, a lot of people still calm, still think we rushed to judgment, that we got a report and the next day we made a decision. This was a hard decision to make that went on for weeks. And I'm glad to see it's laid out here, you know, that we looked at the WTOP report and it took a lot of other things into consideration. They're striping Main Street, that's what they're like, so. But that's what I like it.
I do regret in the debate that we had, that we didn't fully discuss the other options. But I do feel, at least individually, I put this, and I said this for all of us, that I think in reading the WTP, I individually considered the other options very seriously. And I think, I felt the rest of you had done also. We just had not done that in public forum. And it probably would have served the process well if we had stated that or done a public forum discussion about it, but didn't mean we didn't consider them.
No, we, yeah. And I just, public still feels that we rushed to it. And I don't, I adamantly deny that. A lot of work and thought went into this, you know, so.
There is, there's one issue that's important to note, and that is that we have a definitive number in the choice that we made. There are so many variables on any of the other options, meaning that what the cost could be. So at least we have a firm number moving forward with this. That was one of the reasons that I chose that.
And you know, and it may be, it may resurrect some bad memories for some folks, but consider, for example, the high school project. And, you know, one of the reasons I think that we had a problem with that project is that we went with the option that sounded like the better one at the time. But when you're remodeling an old building, there are a lot of variables, there are a lot of question marks, and it's exactly what we ran into, the issue of the asbestos and everything else. And even though the state gave us money to do the remodeling, ultimately, it cost us more in the long run. And if, you know, you look back and you say hindsight is 20/20, well, here's one of those situations where we can look back and we can say, should we have gone with the definitive option, which would have been to build a brand-new school, the costs would have been known because there wouldn't have been any question, am I having to replace this, or what could be kept, or what needed to be renovated? It would have been a package. You would have been able to say, these are the plans, this is how it's going to be built. But instead of doing that, we went with the other option because, for whatever reason, it sounded better. And unfortunately, the variables involved in that other option are really what killed us. It's the reason why the costs went over, it's the reason why the project went behind schedule. And you look at the same sort of situation here with the wind turbines, and we've got various options on the table. One of the options is a clear definitive number associated with it. We know that if we decommission the turbines, the problem goes away. We know exactly how much it's going to cost us, and we know that when we do this, it's all going to be done and over with. The other options, they might be cheaper, but remodeling the high school might have been cheaper too. There's so many variables in these other options and so many questions about whether or not they're going to work, whether or not they're going to be feasible, whether or not they're going to be cheaper or more expensive, that quite frankly, I will go with the definitive option. And this is why I decided to go with this option of removing the turbines entirely is because it's a definitive answer. I can put my finger on it and know that once we've done this, it's done and it's over with. Everything else here is open to so much question, so much interpretation, that we could end up with another high school project where we're paying for it and we're dealing with litigation, and we're dealing with a headache for years to come because we decided to go with something that on the face of it, maybe it was cheaper, or maybe it looked like it was cheaper. But when you really dig into it, there's so many worms in that can that you just want to put it aside and let's just go with this idea.
Anybody else?
I just have one question.
Sure.
In the memo from town council about the process as set forth by Campaign Political Finance, that if we do do a press release, that we forward them a copy of the press release? Are we still, is that still a requirement? I mean, is that still something the council says we should do? I think in one part of it, it just said, as long as you send us a copy of what you're putting out to the public.
That's my understanding, that they would ask that you would forward that.
That you would forward.
That's in the regulation.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we were, remember that we were aware of that. Not that it makes, I mean, it doesn't change anything, it's just sends them what they asked for.
Well, do we want to take a vote tonight for this board to support this letter?
I'm prepared to do that.
So that we can, you know, we probably have two Friday additions for the enterprise, which is the most popular red edition. One would be this Friday. We could take this and try to get this posted as a press release for this Friday's paper, an op-ed piece. And then the following Friday, we could do the wastewater infiltration issue.
Do we want to submit this also to the Cape Cod Times? I've heard various sources that the Times actually has a larger leadership in Falmouth than the enterprise does, so.
It's a press release, I think, the reason it shouldn't be released to both.
To all of us.
But I think we would want the signatures or the vote that every one of us was tying in to this, to this letter, to this press release. Is that, do I get that feeling? Okay. So can I call for a motion on that just?
I move that we approve the letter as prepared by Doug.
And I'll add everyone's name to the bottom of it?
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor? Aye. Close? Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I wonder also, is this the sort of thing that we could potentially prepare a spot at FCTV and ask that they replay it? I recall, for example, that some Boston stations occasionally have editorials where someone's actually reading an editorial on screen advocating a certain position or an editorial position of the television station. I'm wondering if we can do the same sort of thing with FCTV.
Have they considered a public resource?
They are a nonprofit organization, not, they're not a government resource, so. That's why I think it would be appropriate for us to do.
We can confirm that with town council if you'd like.
I'll check.
So because we cannot use the town's offices or equipment, will you, you take care of that? So why don't we plan on discussing the other ballot question next week? And I'll bring that forward to the board for their approval at that time. Okay. Next up, vote to submit special legislation authorized by Article 22 of the April 9, April 9 and 10, 2013 special town meeting. As the board remembers, we, the article passed to approve the special legislation if it passed at the ballot, but we need a vote of this board so that we can ask town council to draw up the special legislation and that we can back to us as well.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest a potential motion that the town councils?
Sounds great.
Fabricated for us, that the board would authorize the chairman to sign a letter of transmittal to Falmouth Legislative Delegation regarding town meeting action to pursue special legislation on the wind turbines.
So move?
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Ayes have it. All right. Next up would be approve minutes.
I move approval of the minutes of April 8.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Ayes have it. Minutes from April 19.
Move approval of the minutes of April 9.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Close? Ayes have it. April the 29th.
I have an amendment or a correction on page three on the, under Murphlex Inc., DBA Murphy's Package Store, the second paragraph, the last sentence, to change it to read that Chairman Murphy said that Selectman Flynn represented the Board of Selectmen at the hearing in Boston and responded to appropriate questions.
That's fine.
Is that okay? Is that okay? All right, with that, I will move the minutes of April 29.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it. We've already concluded the town manager's report. Does anyone else have anything else that they would like to bring up?
Something very minor. I know one of the things I had brought up a number of months ago was a committee handbook, and it was mentioned at this meeting that Mike Palmer was actually the one who was leading that. I spoke with him. He said five years ago, he gave the draft copy to Bob Brittenhour to be distributed to the selectmen for approval, and that never happened. So there's actually a draft of this committee handbook somewhere, and it would have to be given to the board, probably not this one, because there'll be changes in a couple of weeks, you know, with me not being here. But the board should probably start looking at that. I'm sure it's going to take a while to go through it. But he did say he supplied it to the former town manager for a review, so.
I hope he has another copy.
He does.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
And actually, it may have been before Dave came on board, but the board did at one point vote to submit, I'm trying to, and I believe it was this particular item, to a number of committees for review and to get feedback before it was distributed to all. I, it's been so many years now, and obviously that was, the follow-up on that obviously didn't happen, so. But we should resurrect it. It is an important document that needs to be moved forward.
Okay. I agree.
I just have a couple of things, and I'll be quick. You may remember that I'm on the Policy Committee for the Joint Land Use Planning Group for the Mass Military Reservation. And they had a workshop this past week, I think it was Monday morning. And by the way, Ahmed Mustafa's a guard now at the MMR.
For a year.
I said, well, I don't need to show you my license, you know who I am. Anyway, it was divided into several groups, solid waste, energy, public works, wastewater, you know, for the planning. The whole idea here is that the federal government wants the base, all bases, all over the country to be able to connect more with the community, to provide services to the community, to share some of their services, and have the community maybe provide some services to the base and exchange. And the model for that is in Montecito, California, and I don't remember the name of the base out there. But they have come up with a really nice plan where public works for the town will plow the roads on the base or do certain work, and then the base performs some other service for the town. And they, it's more of an even exchange so they don't have to keep track of who does what. And they want all the bases to do that because they want to be able to keep them open. This is like because of the BRAP, you know, the, what is it, Base Realignment and Closure Operation, that the, that Congress can all of a sudden decide that a base is going to close under the BRAP. So the whole idea is to find ways to make the base be able to serve the four towns it's surrounded. And there are a number of interesting issues that came up during that whole presentation. The report will be completed by the end of June, so we'll get to see what some of those ideas might be. And the other thing is that the Mass Municipal Association, in collaboration with the Department of State, had arranged for three Pakistani government officials to visit three states here in our country. And the town administrator in Brewster, Charlie Sumner, agreed to, in Massachusetts, to be one of the hosts. So he had them stay, and they're three women. One was in the Department of Taxation, one was in education, and one was, I can't remember the third one. So he brought them to the county commissioners' meeting last week, and we spent two hours with them. And it's amazing, I had no idea that in Pakistan, that English is mandatory in the schools, that they have to learn it. I also asked them about the status of women in Pakistan, because you would think in some of the Middle Eastern countries, well, we all know what some of the issues are over there. But in Pakistan, women are not, are very respected, and many of the women work in government. And, and also, she told us, they told us that English is the language that is mandatory in all government agencies in Pakistan and in the schools, they all have to speak English. So anyway, it was a fascinating visit we had with them. We learned a lot. And they went, they were staying at Ocean Edge, pretty nice. And, and then they were in Boston, so it was a nice exchange. They told us that they had to go through a lot of hurdles to be accepted into this exchange program. It was supposed to be exchanged where then some of our government officials would go to Pakistan, but there's too much uncertainty in the Middle East and the United States didn't really want to send anybody over there, so. But anyways, kind of interesting.
Great.
I'd forgotten that Pakistan was actually an English colony at one point, which may explain why English is the official language or is required there.
Required, yeah.
That's right. You're right.
Oh, and the biggest problem, we asked them what the biggest problem they have in Pakistani government and its corruption. And we said, oh, we don't have any of that.
I'll move your turn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Close? Ayes have it.
This National Teacher.
inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled yet affordable family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats,